Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonzo Morse Stadium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is NPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 44. Class 44. What did we learn in Class 43? Well, we started learning about the 1913 French Protectorate of Morocco. What are we really learning about this particular document? We're learning how the colonists are using Moroccan treaties to their advantage. Advantage to do what? To create commerce. And what's the first thing on their list as it relates to commerce? They're talking about what's called the movable, movable, movable money. And what's that? The Moors themselves. What's the next thing they're talking about? Constable Court, because Constable Court controls the movement of the land. What else are they talking about? The immovable, immovable money. What is that? The estate. And anything that comes out of the land is considered commerce. What else are they talking about? They're talking about what? The seaports, the coastal line to deal with customs, the ports. That's where you create the commerce. So you have to understand that the colonists are using Moroccan treaties to their advantage. Why? Because the Moors aren't using their own Moroccan treaties to their own advantage, right? So, as we're talking about the 1913 French Protectorate, what else is it that the colonists are talking about? Why are we talking about this in the first place, the 1913 French Protectorate? What is the real reason why we're talking about this? So we can impress upon the Moors that the colonists, and what's called the 20th and 21st century, has branded the Moors as proteges and subjects. And it's not just a loose term they use, they literally put it in the treaties. And the treaties are the supreme law of the land. So therefore, in the treaties, it lists the Moors as Moors, Moroccans of Morocco. But it also lists the Moors as what? Proteges and subjects. Those are the statuses in the treaties. But when they talk about Moors as being proteges and subjects, what are they saying? That the Moors are stateless. So therefore, when you stateless, you come under the protections of the country that has conquered you. And the only way to get out of that country, out of that naturalization status, to come back to what? The entire submission of the laws of the empire. It's that simple. So the reason why we're going over this in the first place is so Moors can understand that the colonists are using your treaties, and Moors need to understand what their status is. That way, they can start to utilize their own treaties once they correct their status. Your appropriate persona su juris is based upon statehood and not based upon your nationality identification or your arbitrary capricious documentation that you're sending to the colonists. Because they know that everything you're writing, if it doesn't have the foundation of statehood, then it is absolutely moot. And that is the truth. So let's continue with the reading. Let's continuously learn what the colonists are talking about as it relates to Moors. You're gonna learn a lot about this one document. Why are we reading this document? Remember what I said, we're learning about what's called a triple principle. We're talking about the triple principle. And what is the triple principle? What is it? Sovereignty and independence, integrity of domain, and economics without any inequality. So that's what the colonists are talking about in this document. They're trying to solidify sovereignty and independence. They're trying to solidify integrity of domains. And they're getting into economic liberty without any inequality. They're checking boxes. And what are they using as a contract to solidify their arguments and their disputes? Treaties. Moors must understand, when in doubt, pull out the treaties. The treaties tell you the names of the parties. So therefore, when Moors have doubt and you're getting into a dispute, when there's doubt, you pull out the treaties. You stick to the strict sense of the treaties, because treaties are what you call contracts. So let's go ahead and get into today's class, alright? Okay, so as I said, NPAC always opens up about our constitution. What is this all about? What is NPAC study session all about? Moors coming back and choosing between the entire laws of the empire, the entire submission of the laws of the empire. That's what NPAC chose to do. We're just simply following instructions. And we're trying to impress upon the Moors as being a beacon on behalf of statehood that Moors have to come back into the constitutional fold of government and then come back into your treaties, then enforce your treaties. We'll talk about that. That's what NPAC is all about. Okay? Let's continue. Alright. So as the Moors know, in Class 43, we were reading the French Protectorate of 1913. We had just finished reading this section where France was making a response back to the United States. And we had got down to the bottom of it. Just to give Moors a refresher, we got down to the bottom. And that's where it ended, right? Okay, so what we want to do is we want to go back up a little bit, there's an overlap, and keep going. Fair enough? Okay. Let's start here, mother.
As to the several points mentioned in your Excellency's note, I may, as I have already done by word of mouth, assure you that the government of the Republic is quite ready to settle in the most friendly spirit the questions of interest to the United States in Morocco that may still be pending.
Okay, stop right there. So, as a refresher, what's happening? Remember, France's response to the United States. The United States had a long-winded response to France because the United States is trying to tie up loose ends, right? So France is trying to get some assurances to the United States, we'll take care of some of these things, okay? But as we continuously read, you'll see that France is now checking boxes. It's all about checking boxes. That way, they can get back to what? What ultimately is France trying to get the United States to do? To ratify consent to the Treaty of Fairs of 1912, alright? So the United States is now stalling, denying, defending because they want to make sure they can hold on to the Moors and they're very concerned about Constable Court, et cetera. I.e., they're concerned about what? How is all this going to affect their commerce? They only care about commerce. Why? Because treaties are about what? Amity in commerce, okay? So they're worried about their money. And who is the number one product that they have? Moors. Moors are the golden goose to everything. So you must understand, we're reading what's called the French Protectorate. Listen. The French Protectorate. Why is it called the French Protectorate? Because the Americans, i.e. the colonists, the Americans of the United States of America are the protectorate party at that time. Prior to the Treaty of Fairs of 1912, who was the protectorate party? It was the United States of America. So now France is now saying, now they're the protectorate party. Why is France saying they're protectorate party? Because they signed the Treaty of Fairs of 1912. Section 6 says what? Now they're the protector of who? Moroccan subjects. Let's take a look at that real quick. Get the proper concept and context, okay, Moors? Okay. Remember, this is a treaty, okay? What is the treaty called? Protectorate Treaty, between France and Morocco. It's a protector, see? But when you go down to Article 6, France now has signed a treaty to be the vice-sultan to do what? Article 6, "The diplomatic and consular agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protections." See that? "Protections of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad." So now France has become what? France is now who? The new what? Protectorate. Of who? Proteges. So that's why it's the French Protectorate, because France is the new protector of the proteges. You gotta see what's happening. France is making a power move. Alright, let's go back. Let's continue from here, mother. Thank you.
Among the, excuse me, among these, that of the proteges naturally ceases to be of any practical importance to the powers that agree to recognize our new course. The tertième tax being besides already paid by foreigners.
Okay, so we already talked about this, right? It's important for Moors to understand, Moors are the proteges. They are the proteges, period. You've been branded as protected. Why are you protected? Because you don't have governments. You're stateless. So therefore, the conquering party has an obligation to protect you. To give you three meals and a cup. That's it. You get scraps. That's it. Let's continue.
As to the right of aliens to own real estate, it has not been restricted by any Sharifian regulations. All that has been done was to take a few urgent measures having relation to strategy or prompted by the necessity of checking speculation in land intended for public use. The complaint of the vacuum oil company against the customs treatment accorded to its products had not been brought by the party concerned or the representative of its country to the motive, to the notice of any government which deems it its duty in this respect to recall that the treaties enforced guarantee equal fiscal treatment to all the powers and that they may be sure that nothing will be overlooked to let their nationals enjoy the full benefit of those advantages. My government indulges the hope that under the conditions I have just brought to mind and in view of its firm intention to examine and settle in an entirely friendly way the few questions yet unsettled in which American citizens are interested, your Excellency will kindly coincide in the views I have just had the honor to submit to you. Your acceptance of these propositions would be particularly gratifying to the government of the Republic, which would take it as fresh evidence of the traditional friendship existing between our two countries. Be pleased to accept.
Okay, let's start right there. So, got a basic understanding. France is checking boxes with the concerns of the United States. Now you're going to find out, now the United States is like, okay, what do we do? But France already knows that the United States is stalling, denying, defending. What does that mean? They're procrastinating. So what does France do? France now tries to enforce now an agreement, a declaration, to try to get the United States now to agree and write, okay? Because everything's about the pen. Now, what comes out of your mouth is about legislation, okay? Now, let's take a look at what France sent. And what's called in good faith. This is an in-good-faith document, okay? France is sending this over to the United States and hey, read this, sign it. That way, now we know that we're moving forward, okay, mother?
The undersigned duly authorized by their respective governments make in common accord, make in common accord the following declaration. Taking into consideration the guarantees of juridical equality offered to foreigners by the French courts of the protectorate, the government of the United States relinquish all claims for its consuls persons subject to its jurisdiction and its establishments to any right or privilege derived from the regime of the capitulations. The treaties and conventions of every nature enforced between France and the United States cover as a right unless otherwise stipulated the French zone in the Sharifian Empire. This declaration will go into effect 10 days after its date, done in duplicate at...
Yes, okay. Thank you, mother. Okay, so what's this about? France is making sure that the United States signs something and what's called in good faith. But what is France trying to secure? They're trying to secure immediately what? The jurisdiction of the courts. Why is that important? Jurisdiction of the courts, equality. Because France wants to control the land and the laws. Once they control the land and laws, they automatically control the wealth. You must understand this. France wants them to agree to removing consul. Where is that? Right here. States relinquish, okay? So they want what? They want the United States to do what? They want the United States to relinquish, relinquish all claims of its consuls.
The French consuls.
Yeah, so France wants the United States to remove its claim of consul. Why is that? Why is France saying this? France is now enforcing what? They're enforcing the treaties. It's the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836. Articles 20 and 21 combined talk about civil and criminal jurisdiction of Constable Court. A lot of Moors think these are separate. They're not separate. They both cover civil and criminal. This is not civil and this is criminal. No, they're both civil and criminal. That's the truth. Go back and read ICJ report, France versus United States of America, and they clarify that, okay? So what is France doing? France is claiming this. Why are they claiming this? Because France is overseeing the treaties. And the United States of America never had permission to be the so-called Constable Court. Why? Because they're the foreigners. They're the aliens. They can't have a superior position, of course, because it's not their land. The only people that can have Constable Court is the people of the land, the natives of the land, the organic people, and not the tenant, not the refugee, not the immigrant within E, immigrant within E. So therefore, France is coming over, straightening out the record. Okay, stop your false claims, your arbitrary capricious and patently frivolous claims that you oversee Constable Court. It's not true. It's coming from these two articles. Okay, let's go back. Alright, let's continue from here. Okay, so now France has wrote this letter, right? But watch this. Now the United States has a response, okay? They read the letter, now the United States is responding, okay? Here we go.
Excellency, I have the honor to inform your Excellency that the department is in receipt of a telegram from the American charged affairs at Tangier stating that the French diplomatic agent in that city in the name of the French resident general had requested of him a memorandum of pending and unsettled claims, understanding that this government would not be favorably inclined to recognize the French protectorate until those cases were satisfactorily disposed of.
Okay, see what the United States is doing? The United States is ignoring what France just said. And France is more or less trying to work with the United States, but the United States is being adamant. They want to tie up loose ends, right? Let's continue.
The American legation at Tangier has been instructed to submit to the proper French authorities a memorandum of all pending American claims in Morocco. And I beg to assure your Excellency that a satisfactory solution of these cases would greatly aid this government in replying to your note of January 8, 1913, containing the request of your government for the formal recognition of the French protectorate in Morocco.
Okay, so what's happening? So now, the United States is saying, listen. France, we know you first started this correspondence in January 1913. Now, the United States still maintaining this correspondence April 1914. So back and forth, right? But the United States is telling France, well, look, if you want us to ratify the Treaty of Fairs of 1912, just take care of these loose ends for us. That's what's happening. There are negotiations back and forth, okay? Okay, now here comes France to the response of the United States. Here we go.
Mr. Secretary of State.
Okay, just move. What day are we in now?
June, June 1914.
Okay.
My government, to which I did not fail to forward the contents of your Excellency's notes of February 13 and April 30 last about the doing away with the extraterritorial rights in the French zone of Morocco and about certain claims of American citizens has just affirmed to me that it had promptly taken steps to bring about, under the most equitable conditions, a settlement of those claims.
Okay, stop right there. Okay, what's important to France? Moors have to pay attention to what's really going on here. France wants the United States of America to get rid of what? Extraterritorial jurisdiction. We looked this word up. Extraterritorial means what? Someone making a claim over someone else's land. Someone has gone over their border and encroaching into someone else's territory. That's what extraterritorial means. So, France knows that the United States of America is maintaining an extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. What does that mean? They're doing something that's legally invalid. That's what that means. So France is saying, stop what you're doing. Now France saying, we have a French protectorate that legitimately now they have power and dominion over Morocco, where the United States of America never had it. So France is now saying, get rid of extraterritorial jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco. That must be understood. They're trying to tell the United States, all your false claims, stop doing it, okay? Let's continue.
In regard to one of them, that of the vacuum oil company, my government, which had never heard of it, wrote to Morocco to inquire about the grievances the concern might have to state as to the customs treatment it receives. General Laute accordingly called upon the agent of the company for explanations. The answer was that he had not the slightest ground for complaint against the customs authorities. As for the other claims, the instructions sent by your Excellency to the representative of the United States at Tangier have no doubt brought to your knowledge with all the needful explanations, the facts from which those claims may have arisen. I beg leave in this connection to refer to the note I had the honor to address to your Excellency, on the 22nd Ultimo April, in which, while answering the main points mentioned in your note of February 13, I lay stress on the importance attached by my government to the government of the United States' earliest possible accession to the request I had laid before you. I am informed by my government that Russia, Spain, and Norway have already renounced their extraterritorial rights by signing a declaration like that enclosed in my above-mentioned note. Other accessions are momentarily expected.
Okay, so what's happening? France is reminding the United States that other colonial states have signed that declaration that we read above, right? The United States is the only one procrastinating, okay? That's what you gotta understand about France talking about right there. Okay, now watch this. This is France now with a back-to-back letter. This is not the United States responding. France doubled up with another letter, okay? So, that was dated, and for the date, June 10th, right? So now they come back, July 16th. France again, okay?
Mr. Secretary of State, in the course of the negotiations for the suppression of consular courts and the extinction of extraterritorial rights in the French zone of the Sharifian Empire, it was occasionally objected to the representative of the Republic that it was not possible for the powers to take any further responsibility in the fate of their Moors proteges.
Okay, so look at France. France is right back talking about who? The Moors, right? Let's read this. "In the course of negotiations for the suppression of Constable Courts and the extinction of extraterritorial rights in the French zone of Sharifian Empire," so what's happening? They're telling the United States, you gotta get rid of Constable Courts, you're pretending that you have Constable Courts. You can't have Constable Courts because you're refugees, you're immigrants within E, you're aliens and foreigners in Morocco, so you can't control Constable Courts. And want them to get rid of extraterritorial jurisdiction in the French zone of where? Sharifian Empire of Morocco. "It was occasionally objected to the representatives of the Republic, who's the Republic, France, that it was not possible for the powers to take any further responsibility in the fate of their Moors proteges." What are they saying right here? That now France gets to oversee the Moors proteges because it's the French protector of the Moors. Moors proteges. Moors gotta catch what's happening here. Moors are proteges. It so jur, Moors subjects are proteges. That means you're stateless. Let's continue.
There would seem to be some foundation for that feeling. In fact, under the provisions of Article 12 of the Franco-German Agreement of November 4, 1911, whose full scope is given in the explanatory letter, the government of the Republic would certainly have the right, after the discontinuance of the consular courts, to ask that protection be done away with. The strict legal effect of this would be to place under native jurisdiction the proteges, who, under the present system, are enjoying consular jurisdiction.
Okay, so what's happening? France is underscoring that the Moors were now coming under protections of France. Right now, they're under protections of who? The Americans. Now they're gonna be transferred over to who? The French, okay? Why is France talking about this again? They're continuously trying to get a perfect understanding, a clear understanding, what's going to happen with these Moors. Why do they keep talking about Moors constantly? Because without the Moors, there is no Constable Court. Without the Moors, there is no real estate. Without the Moors, there is no trade. Why? Without Moors, there is no treaties. Treaties, Moors. These four treaties I have in my hand. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787, 1836, 1880, and 1906. You can even throw in a Treaty of Fairs of 1912. That makes five. It's all about who? Moors. Without the Moors, there are no treaties with the colonists. The colonists need the Moors. They're holding on to the Moors. That must be understood. That's why France keeps talking about this, okay? Because the Moors are the money. We're the true asset, okay? Let's continue.
But with a view to obviating the hardships that might thereby be brought upon the Moors subjects thus deprived of protection, the government of the Republic is ready to declare them to be, as long as they live, under the jurisdiction of the French courts set up in the protectorate. This would place them in this respect on an equal footing with the persons subject to the jurisdiction of the former protecting power and not with the natives.
Alright. Did you catch what just happened? Let's read this. It's very clear. "But with a view to obviate..." What's obviate? Avoiding. "But with a view to avoiding the hardships that might thereby be brought upon the Moors subjects." Remember, they call them Moors proteges. Now they're Moors subjects. Semantics, but semantics matter because they're putting these words in treaties. These words are getting from treaties. They're not just making up some brand. It's in the treaty, so using the words of the treaty. Moors subjects. It so jur, Moors subjects are stateless people, even if they have a nationality card. "Moors subjects thus deprive the protection." "The government of the Republic is ready to declare them to be..." Who's who? Who's the Republic? France. "France is ready to declare them to be, as long as they live, under the jurisdiction of the French courts set up in the protectorate." So that's what this is all about. France taking over from where America left off, okay? "This would place them in this respect on an equal footing with the persons subject to the jurisdiction of the former protecting power." Who's the former protecting power? The Americans. And not with the natives. Why is France telling this to the United States? France is trying to let the United States know that the Moors not gonna have their own governments. France is taking over. France is gonna hold on to the golden goose. So the power's not coming back to the natives. Who's the natives? The Moors. You must understand, Moors, when you don't have your own governments, we put ourselves in a position to be governed. And if we're being governed, that means they get to govern us with their law enforcement and their courts. They keep a knee on our necks, all because we're stateless. What's the answer to the test? Statehood. How do you stop all this? Statehood. Let's continue.
My government authorizes me to make its intentions as to this known to the federal government, being convinced that they are likely to remove any apprehension concerning its proteges if, after availing itself of the rights conferred upon it by the existing provisions, the government of the Republic should procure the abolition. I avail myself of this opportunity to enclose the three copies of Louis Renaud's Preface to the Coves and Laws Enforced in the French Protectorate in Morocco, which brings forth the value and importance of the legislative work of the protectorate. Showing as it does the guarantees extended to all foreigners in Morocco, that paper ought to expedite... that paper ought to expedite adhesion to the new system on the part of the few powers that have not yet relinquished the exercise of consular jurisdiction.
Okay, so France is pointing out what? Talking about these foreigners in Morocco. So the Americans are foreigners in Morocco. Americans are foreigners in Morocco. And who are the natives? Moors. Who are the natives? Moroccans, referred to as being Moorish. Moors really only have four statuses. Moroccan, Moor, Moorish of Morocco. That's it. That's your proper status. Your Ipsougeur Moorish status is about what? Being a Moor. Moroccan, Moorish of Morocco. That's it. But then you're branded in the trees as being what? Subjects and proteges. That's it. We must stick to the strict sense of contracts. When Moors start understanding the strict sense of contracts, then we must stick to the party names. Moors are not black. There's no mention of Moors being a black people in these trees. There's no mention of Moors being African-Americans in these treaties. There's no mention of Moors being Moorish Americans in these treaties. So when you stick to the strict sense of the treaties, when in doubt, pull out the treaties. So what is it saying in the treaties? It says you're a Moor, or it says you're Moroccan, or it says you're Moorish. Branded as what? Subject and protege. That's what we gotta start understanding. According to treaties, treaty supreme all the way. Let's continue. All right, so where are we now? This is now another section of France, okay? France is now going to write a Another. Letter. They're writing them back-to-back, okay? This is France now, July sixteen. Same date. They're talking about two subject matters, two different letters. Okay, let's listen now. Let's see what they have to say now.
Mister Secretary of State, by a letter dated February thirteen last, Mister Basset Moore made known to the embassy, the federal government's intention respecting the acceptance of the jurisdiction of the new, of the new courts instituted by us in Morocco for persons subject to American jurisdiction.
Stop. Who the person subject to American jurisdiction? Moors, who are branded as what? Proteges and subjects. Of whose jurisdiction? American jurisdiction. America is a jurisdiction. Morocco is a jurisdiction. Morocco is a jurisdiction. America is a jurisdiction. Moors have to keep it simple. We have to choose between. Okay, let's continue.
At the same time, Mister Basset Moore expressed a strong desire to arrive at settlement of various questions affecting American interests in the Sharifian Empire. The resident commissioner-general of the French Republic, to whom the State Department's note was forwarded by the Minister of Foreign Affairs, has returned to Mister Viviani and answered the substance of which I had the honor to communicate to you. With the exception of two clearly defined cases, vacuum oil company and the Benetou case, which will be fully explained here and after, the federal government formulates but does not specify reservations or demands of a purely general character against the protectorate government. There is no question about the federal government being as much as any other warranted in watching over the economic rights and interests of Morocco, which, as put by Mister Basset Moore, are safeguarded by the treaties concluded between the foreign powers and the Sharifian Empire. But it is equally true that the protectorate government is bent on respecting to the fullest extent in favor of Americans, as well as all other foreign citizens or subjects, the principle of economic equality.
Okay, let's stop right there. So France is underscoring something here. France wants to get into trade as quickly as possible. So they're trying to give the United States some assurances, hey, everything's going to be okay. The Moors gonna have governments. At the same time, France is saying, let's, let's put the Moors in a protective status of France so France can oversee what? Consul court. That way they can maintain some sort of equality on behalf of the Moor, because they recognize the Moors or what? The protective party does not necessarily getting their rights according to consul court. They know the United States is belligerent and not enforcing the treaties because the United States is only interested in commerce and not interested in the treaties whatsoever. So therefore, France is talking about what? Economic equality. But they're also talking about what? These citizens and subjects. Citizens are who? Americans. Who are the subjects? Moors. Let's continue.
The principle being once more evoked, the reservations or claims put forth by the federal government are so general in their character that from the fact that the importance of American interests and the number of persons lying under American jurisdiction appear to be out of proportion to the set of reservations and objections offered, the question arises whether Mister Basset Moore's letter of February thirteen nineteen fourteen is not aiming, after all, and while the federal government expresses itself in favor of the reforms to reopen the question of the very principle of the protectorate regulation powers. As a matter of fact, it does not seem possible to maintain the protests that have been made against the protectorate government upon careful examination of every one of the questions presented.
Stop. What's happening? France has recognized United States Americans doing what? Stalagging, I think. They're procrastinating. So France is getting tired of this. The United States of America is coming up with frivolous things to say. Okay, so what do they say? "As a matter of fact, it does not seem possible to maintain the protests that have been made against the protectorate government." Who's the protectorate government? France. "Upon careful examination of every one of the questions presented." So now France is, now they're gonna go down some questions, okay? They recognize the United States is just procrastinating.
As regards the contemplated martial law in cases of contraband of arms, the matter having been settled by dropping the subject need not be brought up anew. Two, the federal government's statement about protection leads one to believe that the meaning and scope of the protectorate's intentions have been misunderstood. Indeed, it never was heretofore our intention to do away with protection, but we meant merely to stop its improper use through a revision of the list jointly with a delegate of every legation concerned.
Stop, and stop right there. We gotta underscore that. What is France saying here? We wasn't trying to free the Moors, they get back to their governments, but we want to make sure that France is overseeing the Moors and get some type of equality in the courts. That's what France is saying. Whether that's true or not, that's what they're saying, right? You never know what their interior motive is. Let's read. "The federal government's statement about protection leads one to believe that the meaning and scope of the protectorate's intentions have been misunderstood." What's the misunderstanding? France is trying to let the United States know, we're, we're not trying to free them. We're not trying to let them get back to their governments, but what are we trying to do? "Indeed, it never was heretofore our intention to do away with protections." What does that mean? To do away with protection means keep these people oppressed and suppressed with no governments. "But we meant merely to stop its improper use through a revision of the list jointly." They knew the United States was what? Belligerent. Doing what? Crimes against humanity. Human trafficking, right? Esteem, hypotachy, discrimination, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So France is trying to come in and be, and be the equalizer, okay? "About this list jointly with a delegate of every legation concerned." Provisions furthermore for such a revision was made in the Franco-German treaty to which the government of the United States gave its adhesion. So therefore, Germany was gonna ready to come over and take over consul courts as well. We'll talk about that later on. Let's continue.
It is important, however, to take notice of Mister Basset Moore's assertion that the choice of the American proteges rests ultimately with the government of the United States.
Okay, stop. We gotta really pay attention. This is very important for Moors to understand. It is important, however, to take notice of Mister Preset Moore's assertion that, so who's he talking about? This is France talking. Keep that in mind. France is pointing out that Mister Preset, who represents the United States, said this, said the following. That the choice of the American proteges rests ultimately with the government of the United States. So listen, that the choice, remember this word? Choice. Why is the United States, why is France putting this out about what Mister Preset said about this choice? They put it in quote-unquote, "choice." What's this "choice" about? Okay, we've been going over this. Listen, what's the "choice" about? He's quoting this treaty, right here. Treaty Madrid, Article fifteen talks about what? Choose between. The United States is trying to do what? Impede the opportunity for Moors to make a choice, right? Trying to impede that. Listen. Rights and conditions, people. Article five, it's about what? To choose. You gotta see the correlations. It's about choice. Going back over here. "It is important, however, to take notice of Mister Preset, someone representing the United States, Moors, asserting that, quote-unquote, the choice of the American proteges." Why is, why is Mister Preset quoted like that? Why is he saying that? Because the Moors are the property of the Americans. Proteges are the property of the Americans. Rest ultimately with the government of the United States. We're gonna read the rest of this paragraph, but I'm gonna show you something. Let's start from the top, okay?
It is important, however, to take notice of Mister Basset Moore's assertion that the choice of the American proteges rests ultimately with the government of the United States. For the right to choose can only be exercised within the limits wherein it conforms to the treaties of the provisions of which the Mazin may remind the powers concerned in order to obtain a return to the enforcement of those provisions.
Stop. Okay, so France quoted Mister Preset Moore's quote right here, right? That ended here. But then France is now underscoring, saying, for the right to choose, for the right to choose, choose, they talking about Article fifteen. For the right to choose can only be exercised within the limits wherein it conforms to the treaties of the provisions of which the Mazin, what's the Mazin? Government, Moroccan government. Moroccan government may remind the powers concerned in order to obtain a return to the enforcement of those conventions. You must do what? Look at that, return to the enforcement of what? Those conventions. What's the convention? Treaty Madrid. What's happening here? There's two things happening here. We gotta really underscore this. We gotta underscore this. Listen, think, Moors, think. What's happening? There's two presentments going on here. Why are they talking about this? I'll show you why. Moors gotta learn how to read their, their treaties. Gotta learn how to read your treaties and enforce your treaties and understand how you defend your treaties and how you use your treaties as an offense. What's happening? There's two parts here. There's two parts to Article fifteen of the Treaty Madrid. It's two parts, okay? First part is about the right of Moors. The second part is the right of the United States of America or any other colonial state holding on to Moors who have failed to come back to the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Listen. Article fifteen, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country, so any Moors who've been naturalized in the United States of America and who shall return to Morocco, so you got a right to, now you're a Moor, come back to Morocco through the abstract and the pen of your state government, shall have to remain for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. What's the ties, entire submission to law of the empire? Statehood. And the obligation to quit Morocco, so if you wanna quit Morocco, you gotta quit it through what? A Moroccan government gotta give you permission. Listen. Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country in the United States was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. That's the first paragraph. What's the first paragraph about? Moors have an obligation to enforce their own treaties, but if they do not, if they do not, listen. Foreign naturalization, heretofore, acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall be contained to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions. This second paragraph is about Moors who are proteges and subjects who have failed to come back to a Moroccan government. What's happening? Foreign naturalization, heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco, so those Moors were still under what? Naturalization status. So, according to the rules established by the laws of the United States, shall be contained, continued to them as regards all effects without any restrictions. You gotta understand, this second paragraph saying the cons get to hold on to proteges and subjects because the proteges and subjects have an obligation to come back to Morocco, and until they do, based on their self-determination, they're determining that they still wanna be subjects and proteges, or they're gonna determine they're gonna come back to a Moroccan state government. Now, watch. Let's go back and read it now. It's gonna make sense to you now. "It is important, however, to take notice that Mister Preset Moore's assertion that the choice of the American proteges." Right? That's the second paragraph, second paragraph of Article fifteen. They found the American proteges rest ultimately with the government of the United States. Why? Because the United States is saying what? Listen. Should be no restrictions for them. Listen. Now here's France. For the right to choose, for the right to choose, for the right to choose. This is why I keep telling Moors, you have to choose. This is an air pack hyperbole. It's an obligation to choose, and when you don't choose, automatically you stay within the jurisdiction of America. You have an obligation to choose. The colonists talked about this. Listen. "For the right to choose can only be exercised within the limits wherein it conforms." Has "conform" entire submission. Conformed to the treaties. The treaties say you must do what? Submit to the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Treaties of the provisions, what provisions? Article fifteen of Treaty Madrid, of which the Mazin, the Moroccan government may remind the powers or the Christians concerned in order to obtain a return to the enforcement of those conventions. So the Moors have to return to the enforcement of the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen. And till then, the United States has no restrictions. That means the Moors are delaying their own justice. They have restricted their own free will, come back to a Moroccan government. And the Moroccan government can't be just your mere expression. It must be through statehood. Hey, something I wanna show the Moors. You gotta stay on this point. Gotta stay on this point. Listen. What did the ICJ say about Moors? This is the summary page, summary page, France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. Moors should be familiar with this by now. I've talked about this quite often. We have to refresh ourselves as we're talking about these proteges. We have to refresh ourselves as we're talking about these proteges. What did, what did the ICJ say about Moores' status? Moores who call themselves Moorish Americans? Moores who call themselves black? Moores who call themselves African-American, et cetera? Indian, et cetera? What did the ICJ say about that status of Moores? Let's listen. Well, could you read this for me? Section two of the summary from the ICJ judgment, which is final.
Unanimous judgment. With regard to consular jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. That is to say, in all disputes, criminal or civil or criminal between citizens or proteges of the United States.
Where's me? The United States? The United States in Morocco is entitled to what? To exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of treaties with Morocco of seventeen, September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. So what are they talking about? Let's read on it real quick. Twenty twenty-one. Why? Because the Moores are not in government. The United States got government. They're the conquer party. The United States is maintaining jurisdiction over Moores. So in the meantime, look what they said. The citizens are the Americans. Look how they branded the Moores, proteges. Why? Because in nineteen fifty-two, the Moores had still failed to come back to what? They failed to do what? To choose. To choose what? The entire submission of the laws of the empire. And until then, we're still branded as proteges. It don't make a difference whether you got nationality card in your pocket or not. Are you now pled your allegiance back to the entire submission of the laws of the, of the empire? What are the laws? Laws of a government, of a state. Just because Moores have this in their possession, if it wasn't issued by a state Moroccan government, then this does not count as law. Listen to me, Moore. This isn't law. This is what you call private law. This is private. This is not public. Public comes from your state government. That's the public law. This is private. This is taking shortcuts. This is not entire. This is why the colonies keep saying, "What we have is patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious." Why? Because it wasn't issued by a state government, government of Moorish governments. The colonies are telling us the truth. This is why they don't accept this from us. And when they do accept it, it's what you call discretionary. They didn't have to. Because there was no law that supported this, no legislation of a government, a Moroccan government that supported these nationality cards, because these are not government credentials. And when Moores start quoting, they got governments and estates and they got official titles of government that's arbitrary and capricious, patently frivolous. That's the truth. Why do I say that? Because Moores have to now get back to the treaties. This is the purpose of why we're going over the French Protectorate, so I can show the Moores how they're enforcing treaties on us. They're allowing the Moores continue to be arbitrary and capricious because they say it's the Moores' obligations to learn their own treaties. We gotta understand that we gotta come up with the answers to the test, and the answer to the test is right in front of us. Until then, we are proteges and, and the United States has every right to hold on to jurisdiction over Moores. This must be understood. This is serious stuff. Let's go on to Article three.
By ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise consular jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the...
Okay. Number, number three.
By ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise consular jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the extent required by the provisions of the Act of Algeceris relating to consular jurisdiction.
Okay, Moore. Now, we've gone over this before. What's happening, Moore? What is happening? What choice words are they using to classify stateless Moores? Proteges.
Proteges.
This is their status. This is their lawful status. Lawful. Why is it lawful? Because it's in the treaties. This is not a brand. You've been branded, yes, but it's in the treaty, which makes it a lawful term. So therefore, the ICJ has said the Moores are proteges because they can't be called Moores because they're going by non-degiers, misnomers, and the Moores have branded their own selves as Moorish Americans. That's not the name of the treaty. The parties must be known. We have to understand this, Moore. This is serious stuff. The ICJ has allowed the United States with no restrictions to oversee proteges and itsojure Moorish subjects. This is serious stuff. What's the good news?
We can choose.
We can choose? That's right, Mr. Foreigner. Here's the good news, Moore. Listen to me. I'm being very direct right now. Because this is serious stuff. The ICJ has given us the answers to the test. How do you get out of protege status? How do you get out? Here's the first thing. First, you gotta do what, Moore? You gotta, you gotta ratify Moore's constitution. That's what we need. Ratified constitutions. Listen to me. Then we have to do what? Ratify the treaties, conventions, United Nations Charter, et cetera. We have to do that. After that, what? Deposit your constitution, treaties, conventions, decorations from your accession to the ratified legislation of the state. So through your state. Now, this becomes law. This becomes law through your state because now your state issued you these state identification based upon the legislation of the law. It becomes of the law. It's no longer private. It's public because this identification was issued from the state. Once you get back to this right here, ratification and depository. So ratification, depository, right? Those are two steps after Algeceris. After that, you do what? Enforce Moroccan law through consular court orders and judgment. Moores gotta do what? Moores gotta check these boxes. That's what Moores have to do. We have to check these boxes. That's it. But wait. If the ICJ said the United States can have jurisdiction over Moorish proteges, okay, you're no longer a Moorish protege. When you come back to your government, you become what's called a Moorish national. You become a Moorish national and not a Aboriginal American anymore. You become a Moorish national, period. Okay, but wait. Hold up. We're gonna stay on this point for just a second. The United States said what? Let's get back to this. The United States says what? The choice... This is nineteen fourteen. Listen. It's important. The choice of the American protege, so the choice of the Moores rests ultimately with the government of the United States. Why is the United States talking like that? They were trying to say the Moores had to get permission from the United States to even be a Moor. The audacity of that. But guess who took care of that question? The ICJ in nineteen fifty-two. Let's go back. Section five. Mother.
Unanimously, the United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless these laws had received its prior assent.
Stop. The United States had the audacity, go to ICJ, said, "The Moores can't just claim to be having Moroccan governments." As a matter of fact, the United States don't have to pay no attention to Moroccan law because there are no Moores. Oh, that's not the truth. That might have been a fact. That's not the truth. Let's talk about the truth. Okay, mother.
There is, however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, a right linked with the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a corollary of consular jurisdiction.
Stop. Listen. The Moores are not even at the ICJ in nineteen fifty-two to represent themselves. So what was representing the Moores in the place of the Moores? The treaty. So imagine when a Moor and a treaty is standing in the ICJ. Imagine when a Moor and a treaty is in consular court of your Moorish state government. Imagine what's gonna happen if the ICJ could enforce a treaty and a Moor wasn't even standing there. Imagine how powerful it's going to be when the, those two come together, the Moor and that treaty along what's called a Moorish state government. That's the answer to the test. Let's start along right here, mother.
There is, however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, a right linked with the regime of capitulations which can only exist as a corollary of consular jurisdiction.
So stop. So the United States was claiming what? Their capitulation, capitulation regime. We looked up capitulation. They say the Moores surrendered their treaties. The Moores decided to be black, never black and colored, African-American and Moorish Americans. On the capitulation, the United States said, "Well, we're the conquer party. We don't have to listen to nobody that's been conquered." ICJ says what? In return. That's not true. Let's continue right here.
So that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, see two and three above...
Stop. So look what the ICJ said. If the Moores on the capitulation have not come back to Article fifteen of the Madrid Treaty, then what? The United States gets to do what? The United States gets to hold on to consular court because that's required to enforce law. Because the Moores hadn't been enforcing their own law. It says what to, to the United States? See two and three. ICJ gave the United States permission to maintain their courts over Moores because the Moores were the proteges of the United States. But listen, how the ICJ finishes up now. Okay, why, mother?
The assent of the United States is essential. But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom shall be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes.
Okay, so look what happened. So right after this, I mean, ICJ tells the United States of America they can maintain courts to enforce law so they can keep their knee on Moores' neck. The assent of the United States is essential to maintain what? What's the assent? The assent of the United States is essential to do what? Enforce law, because it has to be laws in every state regardless of the status. But then they turn around and say what? But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. That's a sentence. ICJ, what, what is the ICJ talking about, ill-founded? Just a moment. Could you read that for me, mother? Definition of ill-founded?
Ill-founded, adjective, especially of an idea or belief not based on fact or reliable evidence. Ill-founded criticism. Synonyms, baseless, groundless, without foundation, foundationless, without basis, unjustified, unsupported, unsubstantiated, unproven, unverified, uncorroborated, unconfirmed, unauthenticated, not backed up by evidence, speculative.
So the ICJ is telling the United States of America what? Them saying that Moores need to get their permission first is arbitrary and capricious and patently frivolous because that's what you call a belief. It's not backed by any truth. The United States had a fact, but they did not have a truth. Remember what I told you about fact and truth? It's always a fact until someone does what? Comes back and does what? Validates to see if it's true. So the old phrase is, "Trust but verify." So now then, the ICJ, and the ICJ says, "Yeah, we trust and verify that you do not have a right to say Moores can't come back into their own Moorish government and you cannot say that you're not obligated to Moroccan law." But subject to this, subject to what? If Moores come back into their government, if Moores come back to their Moroccan state government, subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, what does that mean? Moores don't need to get the permission of the citizens to enforce Moroccan law. That would be contrary. Contrary would be contrary for Moores to have to get permission from their tenant to enforce a lease agreement. That would be contrary. The landlord is the landlord. He can enforce his contract. And the tenant is obligated to set lease agreement. That's what contracts are. That's what the treaties are. The United States is subordinate in the contract. So who's superior? Their loyal Moores. Is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes. And what's the ordinary method? Here's the ordinary method. I'll show you. Consular court. See how the ICJ is pointing this out? This is why France is trying to get control of the courts. It's all about courts. But first you have to secure the land through what? Statehood. Once you secure the land, then you secure the laws through what? Consular court. Once you can secure the laws and the land, now you enforce what? Wealth. Now you got wealth. You can enforce your Moroccan law. Let's start along right here.
It is important, however, to take notice of Mr. Bassett Moore's assertion that the choice of the American proteges rests ultimately with the government of the United States. For the right to choose can only be exercised within the limits wherein it conforms to the treaties of the provisions of which the Magin may remind the powers concerned in order to obtain a return to the enforcement of those conventions. If the powers would forego in principle their consular jurisdiction, we might per contra take up such an enforcement in as liberal a spirit as possible and to that end, come back to a bilateral revision as provided in the Franco-German Treaty. Three, the remarks offered in regard to the original circular of November one nineteen twelve laying down rules for the purchase of land appear to have been prompted by an incomplete study of the subject on the part of the Washington government. On the other hand, the consent of the government referred to in Article eleven of the Madrid Convention in Article sixty of the Act of Algeceris and again mentioned in the Regulations of November one nineteen twelve does not, of course, apply to any but those parts where such consent is requisite, that is to say, without the ten-kilometer zone within, without the ten-kilometer zone around the ports and the two-kilometer zone allotted to Azzamur. On the other hand, the circular of November one nineteen twelve cannot apply to the Tangier territory specifically referred to in the American Memorandum since Tangier and its per- per- perlius do not come under the regulations decreed in the Protectorate. As to the habus or government land, the Ghislans, the circular of November nineteen twelve merely repeated in their respect pre-existing principles that are enforced in every state, that is to say, the principles that some land is public domain and inalienable. And again, bringing forward that principle, the Resident General merely availed himself of the power to issue regulations granted by the Franco-German Treaty.
Okay, so what's happening here? They're just talking about real estate. Go on down on this. Moores have to remember, what, what is this habus? Habus properties. What is that? Those are what you call your megalithic buildings. Right? Moors built limestone buildings all around the world. Now the colonists occupied them and called them government buildings. So those buildings were churches and government buildings of the Moors. So the Moors go do some research on habu's. You'll see, when you look at images, you'll see. They always keep showing the columns of Egypt. It's all about the megalithic buildings and statutes and everything. That's considered the property of Moors. And if the columns are occupying any of those buildings, they have to pay rent. And guess what? They cannot have a deed. To claim any of those buildings because those buildings belong to the Moorish government. We're gonna learn about that. Let's continue.
In answer to the fault found with servitude zones. We are justified in holding that all purchases of land are permitted by the Act of Algeceris. Subject to Article sixty. Subject to the obligation placed on the purchaser to conform to the laws and usages of the country. Now the Sharifian decrees creating zones of military servitude are precisely to be numbered among local laws. As the aforesaid Act of Algeceris could not presume to prevent on every subject whatsoever laws and usages. Or including that phrase, only those that existed in nineteen oh six.
Okay, stop. So we all know that what? Article sixty of the Act of Algeceris is all about the Qadi. We have to understand that. So you see Article sixty of the Act of Algeceris, that's the Qadi. To oversee what? Taxes and revenue and especially oversee what? Deeds. And the columns cannot transfer their deeds without the Qadi validating and satisfying himself. To make sure what's happening, taxes are getting paid. Let's continue.
Mr. Moore's letter further on asserts that the records of land titles. Which must furnish the Qadi with the means of verifying, verifying the validity of the contemplated transactions are very incomplete. The conclusion drawn by Mr. Moore from this purely gratuitous assertion would, if accepted, have but one result. A perpetuation of wrongs based on those previously committed. Furthermore, when looking into the lawfulness of pending transactions. The local authorities do not confine their investigation to an inspection of the said records. Five, as regards to Article sixty-three of Algeceris. Of the Act of Algeceris, Protectorate Government never showed any intention to evade its operation and still more unfounded. Is the assertion that the Sultan gave notice to the diplomatic corps of measures aimed at the recovery. Of property of the class referred to in the aforesaid article. Such a notice never was served. Such a notice never was served. The only measures taken had for their sole object, the prevention for the future of the wrongs, the settlement of which for the past. Must be effected in accordance with the procedure directed by the Act of Algeceris.
Okay, so right here, number five. Now they're talking about the habu's properties, the government properties of Moors. Okay, so let's, let's take a moment. And look at the Act of Algeceris. Right, this is Article sixty. Everybody should be familiar with Article sixty by now, okay? So we're scrolling down. We know it talks about deeds, right? Okay. But we're gonna go down to Article sixty-three. Moors have to familiarize themselves with Article sixty-three. Because Article sixty-three talks about our Moorish government, those limestone buildings. All of those churches that, that Moors built, et cetera. That's Moorish government. And that the colonists can occupy them, but they have to pay rent. However, they can never own them as relates to a deed. Okay? Article sixty-three of the Act of Algeceris nineteen oh six, mother.
Article sixty-three, the Sharifian delegates have stated that habu property. Or certain state property, notably buildings of the Magin occupied at a rental of six percent. Are held by persons subject to foreign jurisdiction without regular title or by virtue of contracts subject to revision. The Conference desirous of remedying this state of affairs charges the diplomatic body at Tangier. To solve these two questions equitably in accord. With the Special Commissioner whom his Sharifian Majesty may be pleased to designate to that effect.
So keep in mind, just a moment. As regards Article sixty-three of the Act of Algeceris, the Protectorate Government. Never showed any intentions to evade its operation and still more unfounded is the assertion that the Sultan gave notice. To the diplomatic corps of measures aimed at the recovery of property of the class referred to in the aforesaid article. Such a notice never was served. The only measures taken had for their sole object. The provisions, the prevention, the prevention for the future. Of the wrongs, the settlement of which for the past must be affected in accordance with the. Procedure directed by the Act of Algeceris. So what's happening in section five? France was reminding the United States about Article sixty-three. Now we go back to Article sixty-three. What does Article sixty-three say? Okay, here we go. Article sixty-three, the Sharifian delegates. So who the Sharifian delegates? Moorish governments. Have stated that habu properties. What's habu properties? All of your limestone buildings that they now say are museums and government buildings and churches, et cetera. Those are government properties, right, of Moors. Listen. The Sharifian delegates have stated that habu property. Or certain state property. See that? It's the state's property. Notably, buildings of the Magin. Who's the Magin? Moors. Occupied at a rental, rental of six percent. Are held by persons subject to foreign jurisdiction. Without regular title. See? They don't have a regular title. What does that mean? They cannot have a deed of Moorish buildings. They can occupy to rent it. They can never own it. Or should I say, hold it as a possession of a deed? They can never claim ownership of that building. Never. It's a Moorish property. Without regular title. What's the regular title? Deeds. Or by virtue of contracts. Subject to revision. What's the contract? Lease agreement. Deeds. Right? So they can hold it, pay rent. They can't own it. It can't be passed on to the next generation of colonies. Moors gotta catch what's happening. So when Moors start getting back into governments. Will start petitioning our demands. Our orders and judgments. For the columns to remove themselves from our government buildings. Some limestone buildings, they belong to Moors. The colonies know this. It's only Moors learning this stuff. The colonies know these treaties backwards and forwards. Let's continue.
Six, as for the customs grievances formulated by the American government. The Protectorate Government is quite ready to give them full consideration when they are specified. The only case presented in the Memorandum of February thirteen has been investigated at Casablanca by our consul there. He reports that the agent of the vacuum oil company at Casablanca told him. He had not the slightest ground for complaint against the customs authorities. But the Memorandum of the Charged Affairs of the United States at Tangier, here and after discussed. Having explained that the difficulties under consideration had occurred at Safi and not at Casablanca. General Laute, Laute, referred the question to the Office of the Comptroller. Of the depth of Tangier, which will furnish all the data with which the settlement of this customs difficulty may be taken up. At the earliest possible date. Seven, as regards the American claims against the Magin. The government of the United States may be assured that they will be examined in the same light as all the claims of persons under foreign jurisdiction. Those already passed upon by the Commission of nineteen ten will be paid in total. To the beneficiaries of the funds of the loan that has just been voted. Eight, as for the Benetou case, our agency at Tangier gives me the following information. Confirmed by Mr. Philippe, our consul at Tangier. He agrees with the information supplied by the Washington government. Jacob Benetou, an American Cempsar, having obtained a judgment from the Schra, Schra. About eight years ago in a real estate suit against several foreigners, of whom one, Mr. Fries, was French. Did not choose to apply to our Consular Court for an ex- executor of the Qadi's judgment. The legations of France and America tried but failed to bring about a friendly settlement of the Qadi's award. By a payment by Mr. Fries, loser of an indemnity to be determined by umpires. But our fellow citizen, arguing that the judgment against him had been obtained by fraud, would not listen to any settlement.
Okay, so let's point this out. Now you get to see that the United States, France are talking about the Qadi, how the Qadi made a judgment. The Schra is what you're talking about now, the judges, right? They're working in unison, both the Qadi and the judges. Right? Jacob Benetou, an American Cempsar. Having obtained a judgment from the Schra. What's the Schra? That's your Moroccan government, your judge, okay? About eight years ago, in a real estate suit against several foreigners, of whom one, Mr. Fries, was French. Did not choose to apply to our Consular Court for an executor. What does executor mean? That means get. Uh, to agree to the, um, appeal that happened, okay? The executor of the Qadi's judgment, okay? So like I said, this word right here is about them getting permission now to agree to the judgment. So therefore, Mr. Fries, Mr. Fries didn't agree to the Qadi's judgment. Why? Because it was going against Mr. Fries who, who was owning some property that belonged to someone else. It belonged to who? Mr. Benetou. Okay, so why am I showing you this? Because it's talking about the Qadi. The Qadi's judgment. Don't let the United States fool you. They know exactly who the Qadi is and what its functionality is. The legation of France and America tried but failed to bring about a friendly settlement of the Qadi's award. By a payment by Mr., by Mr. Fries, the loser of an indemnity to be determined by umpires. But our fellow citizen, arguing that the judgment against him had been obtained by fraud, would not listen to any settlement. So the French guy, he didn't want to write a check. To Jacob Benetou, even though he lost in the case. All right, but why am I pointing this out to you? It's about the Qadi. You don't understand what I'm doing right now. I'm pointing out to Moors the use of the treaties for Moors. It's not so much about the storyline. It's about the power of our Moroccan treaties utilizing positions such as the Qadi and the judges. That's Consul Court made a decision. The Qadi was involved with that. And that's what Moors gotta take away from this. How do we utilize our treaties? That's how powerful our treaties are, that the foreigners have to come to us to get their decisions. That's just treaty law. Let's continue.
Inasmuch, however, as the land in dispute lies within the Tangier Zone. The American government cannot condition the relinquishment of its extraterritorial rights upon a settlement of this case. Which by reason of its situs does not lie under the jurisdiction of the Protectorate Authorities.
So what's France saying here? France said, listen, man, United States, y'all can't say because of that one little case, y'all are not signing the French Protector. You're not consenting and ratifying. The French Protector nineteen twelve. You're just procrastinating. So knock it off. Okay, let's continue.
In order to arrive at a more precise knowledge, if possible, of what is asked for us, of us. Our agency at Tangier has been instructed to apply to the charged affairs of the United States. For such information as he possesses about the American claims the government of the United States wished to have settled. Before recognizing our courts in Morocco.
So France wants their courts to be recognized.
Mr. Blake's Memorandum under date of May seventh sent in reply to our charged affairs compromises fourteen claims. But seven of these may be even more stricken out. The first five, including the Benetou case, belonging Tangier and the other two in El Kassar and La Rock. They therefore do not come by reason of their situs under the jurisdiction of the Protectorate. Cannot be brought into a discussion of the relinquishing of extraterritorial rights in the French zone.
So what is Fran- France saying? Hey, man, y'all got this list of stuff. It don't have nothing to do with anything. You're procrastinating. Continue.
As to the other seven claims, they are all routine cases and most of them of a judicial nature. They do not offer, either in their character or their importance, a class of litigation which may afford ground to the United States. For further postponing the relinquishment of its extraterritorial jurisdiction and privileges.
So wait. So the United States is enjoying what? Privileges to be in Morocco. That must be understood. We'll talk about that another day as well.
The Resident General is at any rate, even now, making it his duty to set on foot an examination of those cases. And investigations by the Protectorate local authorities respectively concerned therein. But these cases apparently are not such as to warrant opposition as a matter of principle. To relinquishing the American extraterritorial rights. Since the Resident General is even now ready to examine and settle those cases in the most conciliatory manner. I deemed it expedient to relate here and above the explanations furnished by the Commissioner of the Republic. Which answer every point in Mr. Moore's Memorandum. These explanations meet every claim and objection of the federal government. Both in satisfying inquiries bearing on specific points and in carrying promises as to minor points that could not yet but will be settled. Finally, the report throws as full a light as may be desired. On some other topics that do not seem to have been correctly understood or interpreted. The willingness of the federal government to recognize that Protectorate's regulation powers cannot be doubted by the embassy or by the French government. I am convinced that your Excellency will find in the foregoing explanations all the paleations you may wish for. And I have no doubt that you will, as has already been done by most of the other powers. Agree to forego the benefits of extraterritorial to reality in the French zone of the Sharifian Empire. And accept to place persons subject to American jurisdiction under that of our courts.
All right, so they want the Moors and everyone to come under French courts.
Aware of the friendly and reciprocal goodwill. Which always presides over the settlement of such questions between our two countries. I cannot but remind once more in conclusion that your Excellency. As Mr. Jussaran did before this in his notes of May for April twenty-second and June tenth last. Of the high value my government would attach to the federal government's early accession to our request laid before it on August twenty-nine nineteen thirteen.
All right, okay. So we start to wrap up. We'll continue the rest of this reading. We only have maybe a page or two to go in the French Protector. We picked that up in class forty-five. What is the purpose of today's class? To keep trying to show the Moors. That contracts matter. What contracts? Treaties. France is enforcing treaties. The United States is enforcing treaties. That first, both are interpreting the treaties to see who has the superior position. So Moors, what do you have to take away from this? What is it, this, what is the status of France and the United States of America? You know what they both are? States. They both have checked the boxes and come into what's called full powers. That's the reason why they can enforce treaties. So when the Moors start understanding that the only way for us to have what's called full powers. We have to do what? We have to check the boxes. Once we check the boxes, what? Once we check the boxes, what happens? Then we can start now getting into what's called what? Dealing with Counselor Court. We can start dealing with the deeds and taxation, dealing with the Qadi. And obviously, we start getting into trade and commerce. These things are important, but what's the first thing Moors gotta do? We gotta stop being proteges. We have to choose the entire submission of the laws of the empire. What does that mean? Each territory needs a constitution. It's as simple as that, boys. Moors have to ratify their constitution, have their three French's government. Have their votes, elect their officials. Moors have to put down their self-appointed crown and pick up a, a ballot and vote for their officers of the state. Only way to come back at the full powers, you must have competent authority. What does the word competent mean? You know what competent means? It doesn't mean you got a lot of knowledge about Moors science. Competent means you have now checked the boxes and came back in the statehood that you have an official title of your state. Competent means you're of a state. That's what competency means. The Moors have to come back to the entire submission of the empire. In order to do exactly what France and the United States of America is doing, which is checking boxes. It's all about checking boxes, boys. I need the Moors to understand this, if they don't understand nothing else. The only way we're going to get our states back is by us enforcing our own Moroccan treaties. These treaties were authored by Moors. The Moors, these are Moors treaties, these are Moroccan law. So when Moors are not coming back into the full entire submission of the law, you, you're not abiding by your own law. Moors are taking shortcuts. We'll never get our states back if we keep taking shortcuts. And the first thing we gotta learn is that we're not Moors Americans, we're not Americans, we're just simply Moors. Moroccans. Moorish of Morocco. And once we understand about the contracting party, which is Moors and Americans, then we get back to our own treaties, our own constitutions and enforce our constitutions. I ain't with that. Islam.